...to review the applicants. And if you see my, you'll see why am I better.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting of August 1st, 2018. Can I have the roll call, please?
Dan Carey.
President.
Peg Connaughton.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Noah and Zara.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes of July 11th, 2018?
So moved.
Motion to second approval of the minutes of July 18th. All those in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Who knows? Okay, motion still passes. Okay, public speak time. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something than what's on our public hearings? This is your opportunity. So if you could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and this will be your time. So Mr. Heinz, please.
Good evening. My name's John Heine, 39 Chestnut Hill Road, South Hadley. And like Dan, I am a candidate for the State Representative for the Second Hampshire District. There hasn't been many opportunities. We've had already a couple debates, but they've all been in South Hadley. So I figure I gotta come over here and get a chance to have you guys put a face to a name. I've met some of you, and of course Dan and I have kinda gotten to know each other pretty well over the last few weeks. So I just wanna give you a brief idea of who I am, what my experience is in South Hadley. I have lived in South Hadley for over 30 years. Been very active in municipal government over those years. Town meeting member for over 30 years. School committee, planning board, select board for 12 years, and currently on a municipal life department. A municipal life board, which oversees the municipal utility we have in South Hadley, which has been really, really exciting. Professionally, I've been in the information technology field. I work, I began working at Mass Mutual in their computer programming, system programming area. Moved on to Holyoke Medical Center. Small community hospital. And have been working the last about 20 years at Bay State Health, which is obviously a very large integrated health system. So the interesting part of working at Holyoke and Bay State, it has really given me a pretty good understanding of the healthcare industry. And for me, healthcare would be a top priority. How can we reduce costs, but also provide access to quality care at the same time? So there are a lot of issues: healthcare, the environment, educational funding. And we see in the papers today that both the House and the Senate failed to reach an agreement on, you know, making some changes to the education, you know, chapter 70 monies, how those are allocated to the various cities and towns. But again, I'm just here to let you know who I am, so you can put a face to a name. I hope I run into you over the next four weeks and six days. There will be two more debates, August, Wednesday, August 22nd, which will be again at the South Hadley Public Library. And then Thursday, August 23rd, at the South Hadley High School. I did petition the Gazette to see if they could have one in East Hampton, but they didn't listen. So thanks so much for allowing me to speak for a few minutes, and it was nice seeing you all.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's in the public hearings, this will be your opportunity. Okay, not seeing any communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. And of course, we're in the Council of Government.
We did get a letter from Charter, and it seems like it's a standard letter that a communication company sent to municipalities about their ownership. And so I'm gonna give this to the clerk, and if anybody's interested in seeing Charter's ownership and financial balance sheet, that will be available.
There's a letter from the Hampshire.
Oh, sorry. And we did get a letter from the Hampshire Council of Governments, a request to join. So I imagine that the clerk also has a copy of that, if anybody would like to see that as well. Mayor communications, Mayor Lashapell.
Good evening. I have several updates. The first update, though, I would like to actually invite our new superintendent, Dr. Leclair, forward, just to give us an update on air quality reports, her overview of the situation, as well as her very diligent, and I would say prompt, response to what she was faced in the first week on the job. Dr. Leclair?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Leclair, the superintendent. And so the mayor contacted me today and asked me if I would provide you with a little update as to what's been going on at Whitebrook Middle School, so I wanted to catch everyone up on that. I gave a presentation two weeks ago to the school committee about some of the challenges we were facing at Whitebrook, and a plan kind of of attack of what we were going to do during the summer and then during the school year. So it's been two weeks, so I don't have everything solved yet, but I did wanna give you an update on what we've been doing in the last two weeks. So I met with a key group of stakeholders at Whitebrook, and we took another tour shortly after the school committee meeting to kind of prioritize what needed to be done, make sure everyone was on the same page. That included our business director, our director of maintenance, the building principal, of course, and Marin Goldstein and Cindy Kozinski from our school committee. We took a tour of the building, looked at kind of what was facing us, and made our priorities from there. I also was able to check in, and we, I heard from the mayor and from the police chief that we had a work crew available to us from the sheriff's department. So I can report to you that the work crew was in our building all day today. They will be there all day tomorrow. They're doing some painting, which has nothing really to do with air quality. The paint was not lead-based, as I mentioned at the school committee meeting, but I think it's a perception thing, and it does make the setting look better and more friendly for everyone. The paint was peeling, so it was not attractive. So the work crew had initially promised to give us two days, which was today and tomorrow, but when they arrived, they said, "We're also going to come one day next week to make sure we've got all the painting done that you requested of us." So they're working on some hallways. Our director of maintenance was good enough to provide all the supplies they needed. Of course, there's scraping, priming, and painting, so it's a multi-step process. We also have a painter that is starting work in the gym next week. He's doing one wall of the gym. There's one wall, if you've been there for voting or for sporting events, there's one wall that's really peeling and does not look good. I don't know if it was humidity or what the issue was, if it just wasn't primed correctly. But this painter is going to take care of that one wall. He's starting on Monday. That will be completed well before the students come back into the building. I've also, I sent all the documents that I provided at the school committee meeting to all of our staff at Whitebrook to give them an update. I also had requested that they think about no more plants in the building, because it is not, some people think, and as I did, that plants enhance the air quality. But according to our health agent, they do not, because there are mold spores that can develop in the soil. So we weren't really thinking about that. So I've asked teachers not to bring any plants back into the building, and I've also asked teachers to make sure their chalkboards are cleaned at least once per week, which they have all said, agreed upon initially, in that email. And so, again, I've been there today, took a look at it. I also saw today that the carpeting has been removed in a large portion of the library. If you're familiar with the library, it's approximately half of the library. There was, years ago, a leak from the roof, which was repaired a few years ago, but that carpet is not in good shape. So we tore half of that carpet up. That floor, I guess, needs to, I'm probably not gonna use the term correctly, but there needs to be some grinding that occurs on that cement surface to bring up glue and some other kind of things that are stuck on the floor, and then it will be sealed. There's also a hallway adjacent to the library where the carpet has been taken up. Same process will be in place there. So the carpet is already up. That process will be completed before the students come back into the building. The other big project that's on the docket this summer is we have 19 doors still in the building that are exterior doors. They're in classrooms, and they're used for emergency exits only. We need to put some weather stripping on the bottom of those 19 doors. So the custodial staff is addressing that. And there is also an area around each one of those exterior doors, about a two-by-three foot square area, that we're taking up the carpet, because we're making the assumption that at some point in time, that carpeting also was wet from students going in or out. It's no longer used as a door, those doors are no longer used for safety reasons for kids to go in and out of recess or anything like that. So they're no longer traipsing in with wet shoes or anything. But without the weather stripping, sometimes water was getting in there during the heavy winter months. So the weather stripping, removing that wet carpet area, putting down tile, will be also attacked this summer, in the next couple weeks. And that's all being done by our custodial staff in the building. So a lot of the things that we've put in place are things that we're funding through the work crews that are coming in. We have some district money for a painter in the gym, and the custodial staff is doing quite a bit of the work. So that's an update. Yes?
This plan of action, is this something that a professional said, "If you do X, Y, and Z, our quality will be better," or how are these projects being picked and prioritized?
So the report, really, the report that was done on air quality, found that there were nine classrooms that were slightly above the level that we wanted them to be for air quality. The rationale for that was because a human being had the HVAC system turned off that day in that part of the building. So the mandate has been given by my office and by the director of maintenance that the HVAC system will not be turned off any longer, which really addresses the air quality issue, the only air quality issue that was picked up in that report. There were some things that were suggested in the report, like painting walls, that have nothing to do with air quality, but would address some of the physical limitations of that building. You know, there are, you know, it doesn't look like it's been loved in a while, so we're trying to take care of some of those issues. We did decide as a committee, though, that we would ask the same group that did the air quality report in June to come back out in December and do another air quality test, because I think, number one, in December, when things are closed up, that's when we're going to know if there are any air quality challenges. It will tell us, it will confirm for us if that's what was the issue with the nine rooms, because that was clearly stated in the report by the Bureau of Public Health that the HVAC system should be running to address air quality. So we wanna confirm in December. And also, I think it's a good time, because we then move into budget-building season, and if we need to put any funds into the budget for next year, we will have the opportunity to do that appropriately.
Counselor Wiss?
So if I'm hearing it correctly, you're confident that the HVAC system, when it's operating and when there's air movement, corrects the air quality problem? It makes sense to me.
Yes. In all the other rooms, the air quality was fine.
I find it interesting they would even do the test without that operating. Why would, they wouldn't call maintenance and say, "Can you put it on so we can see if it's..."
They did not, when they came into the building, they did not go around the building with maintenance, with our maintenance director or even a custodian. They didn't ask questions of our staff. Our administrator was in a meeting, she didn't even realize they were there. So that might have been addressed at the time. This time, I'll make sure that I'm there when they walk through.
Well, as we all know, air gets stagnant when it's not moving, and it's, it's an obvious thing. You don't have to be a rocket scientist, but the perception that's out there from the carpeting, from everything.
Right.
You just relieved a lot of it by telling me the HVAC wasn't even on the night that they did that test.
In those nine classrooms, in that way, yes.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kozinski?
Thank you, Dr. Leclair. I think you've done an excellent job in the summarization, as I understand it. I did wanna ask, just for the public to be, to be clear, I know that the carpet removal, the majority of the carpet removal has been done. There's no plans, as I understand it, to replace that carpet, but as you said, to seal the concrete floor, paint it, do something to keep it intact, and maybe a couple of area rugs or something to, to work for the, for the students in certain areas.
Yes, so just to be clear, we still have carpet in several classrooms. The carpet that has been removed last summer and the carpet that's being removed this summer is carpeting that at some point in time was wet. Not even within the last year. We don't have any large leaks that were on carpet recently. The only thing that may have happened last winter is, again, without the weather stripping, some water may have gotten in through those exterior doors. We're removing that carpet. All of the remaining carpet will be shampooed this summer, so it is cleaned. It is worn. There is no denying. It's old carpet. But it is cleaned every summer, it is shampooed. So anything that was wet at one time will be gone at the end of this summer.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Heather? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leclair, for, I don't know, maybe a six-hour heads-up of, that would be wonderful if you can come to City Council. That was great.
My fault.
No, no, no. She gave a great email summary of what I should say, and then said, "Oh, I can come." And I was like, "Hey, why don't you?" So, thank you very much. I will also say, in that first meeting where Dr. Leclair convened a small group to go over the reports that were in front of us, I noted that she already had director of maintenance presence with different quotes and options to, to mitigate the, the report and suggestions that came up. So she has been on this day one, and it's a pleasant surprise to hear that you are already proactive, and will do air testing again in December. Thank you for that. The, just a few other things I'd like to bring up, starting with just an update on economic development efforts. As I've talked about at several city council meetings and subcommittee meetings, around looking at any opportunity, every opportunity for grant, but also financial and new growth opportunities for the city. Before this, what I'm about to announce, there were two $25,000 grants that we had talked about around bringing our budget process up to the Government Finance Officer Association award levels and best practices. I now have another $200,000-plus, it's $211,600, in grants that have been awarded since I last was before you. The Municipal Vulnerability Grant, it's a feasibility study, it's $28,000. Dave Mottner from Fire and Jeff Bag for Planning are taking the lead on this. And the most important part of this grant will be, it opens us for a second round of a grant that actually completes a project. Towns around us have done the feasibility study two years ago, and right now have been granted in the upwards of $200,000 to $400,000 to complete a project that strengthens our resources or a particular part of the town against a climate-related incident or event, like a microburst, or flooding in Lower Mill Pond. So we have not identified that project, that's what the study is about. But that is just to, to, starting off. Today, we found out we got $3,100 from the AG's office for the Healthy Summer Youth Jobs Grant. John Mason has already designated that money to pay local youth to work in our summer camp, and we will expect to go after that money again next year. And a thanks to the Attorney General for making money available. We have successfully secured $100,000 in the Governor's Environmental Bond Bill with the support of Representative John Seibek. The staff lead on this project is Jeff, is John Flag, Building Inspector, where we, he and the fire department identified a dilapidated pump house in Lower Mill Pond area that is rapidly falling apart. The $100,000 will be to secure that building and tear it down to the specs of Department of Environmental Protection, who's already been out twice, and has given us a report and an order that's rather immediate. We hope to have additional funds or funds somewhere in that $100,000 to not just make it safe, once the part of the building that needs to come down does, but also at least start towards making that pump house ADA accessible as a fishing platform. I'm not sure we'll have the funds in the $100,000, it depends on the scope of, of the line in the bond bill. I am working right now with the Lieutenant Governor and the Governor's Western Mass Liaison to release that $100,000 from the bond bill immediately, and both John Flag and Deputy Chief Heneman have been very helpful in that process. I feel good about it. Another legislative request that did come through, was sponsored by Senator Humison. It was a total of $55,000 for all the council of aging in his Senate district equally dispersed, so the council on aging in East Hampton will get $5,500 from that request. We also have pending grants and opportunities that we will hear shortly. One is on the agenda tonight, in specific, is the Park Grant. It's a reimbursement grant, $400,000 for the Campbell property on East Street. The lead right now on this is Planning Jeff Bag, who's been working with DPW, but also our conservation agent, on the securing of that. There's detail of that grant in your packet tonight. We have just put in for a $250,000 capital asset grant that will bring Valley Bike Share at no cost to the city to East Hampton. Yes, right? And we feel good about that grant, but it's a competitive grant. Jeff Bag is leading that, and that will also bring in DPW and Parks and Recs about placement. And that grant application will be posted on the planning page, so you can see just tentatively where these charging stations could go. We've already seen Valley Bike just this past weekend doing a loop, picking up spare bikes and putting them on their mobile charging station, as they've been left in East Hampton from surrounding towns who already participate. This is certainly in line with our master plan, open space plan, but also economic development, and goes very nicely with the grants that we are pursuing with the Union Street Project, as well as our Mass Works Grant, which is the last one. I don't have an amount for you. We anticipate the Mass Works Grant that will be submitted on August 10th to be very large, and we are focusing on our diff district. There was a presentation at the Historical Commission briefly last night, just around the use of historical tax credits and why it would not be applicable, but explaining how to preserve the quality of that site by a developer who I hope comes forward to this body in early September. But also, I'm trying to get those materials from the historical grant. We've been meeting with some developers over the last three months to work towards this particular grant, and it looks like it's a go. I look very much forward to coming back to you with a description and a presentation on that. And on that, I can't count the hours, DPW and Planning have been working on the water and highway sewer departments. Those teams have been going very fast and prioritizing our Mass Works application. Very important grant. We have one shot at it every year. This is it. Let's ask our fingers. I forget. Just on a couple of policy updates, I convened a Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee, Water Lunch, to talk, not really about the committee, but those stakeholders who are affected by the quality of our drinking water around the Barnes and Grand Brook Aquifer, and looking at it as one geographic formation. The next steps of, of just really, we wanna talk about drinking water and consider drinking water as a regional asset, not that this is North Hamptons, East Hamptons, Southampton, Holyokes, Westfield, West Springfield. It doesn't really work that way. The boundaries of our municipalities we have so conveniently created do not seep into the grounds like the pollutants that do, and contaminate everyone's water. Our next up there, I am bringing the signatories to the original MOU that was signed in 1989 together, and we're gonna look at options going forward for that advisory committee. The team at Pioneer Valley Planning Committee has been fantastic with that, and, and kind of keeping all the documents and keeping us going and getting technical information. Connected to that work was a wonderful announcement and exceeded my hopes around our community development grant. We received $798,000 to continue the work in the Admiral Street area and New City to improve water and basic infrastructure. PVPC stepped in at the very last minute to pick up the work of two employees in the planning department who have since left, and work with new staff and staff who are being trained up. While we thought the grant was very competitive, our application was very competitive, the expectation was nowhere near almost $800,000 in award. So I would say kudos again to our, our crew downstairs, and, and look forward to seeing that area of our city really get some, some needed infrastructure improvement. What's been done has been great, but it's just the start. The last thing I have on this, Community Relations Commission. I just had a presentation to the Appointment Subcommittee, and I will defer to Chair Coniff to report at during her committee and be available to answer any questions. We are pushing forward. There are definitely some growing pains around our switch and our alignment to federal, state, and also municipal best practices for Internet technology. And that's around our website, our encryption status, our email convention, naming conventions. They are changing, and they're different, and they do feel a little more sterile and government-like. But we have had, you know, some grave near misses, where folks, one, don't identify our emails, be as government or as legitimate, because they're not .govs. And the format that is suggested by the state is Mass, is EastHamptonMA.gov, just like HolyokeMA.gov, BostonMA.gov. And when whatever, and I, you know, the wonders of the web, look at an email address and try to figure out if it's really from a city or whatnot, that, that is becoming more and more important, as is the naming convention. So an issue that we're facing in my office right now is, folks are very used to emailing me, mayor@easthampton.org, or mayor@easthamptonma.gov. So mayor is one word, and our naming convention is the first initial, last name, so N.Lashapell, @easthamptonmass. Yeah, we, you know, you think you think of everything, you don't. So some of the stuff gets bounced back, because it's looking for our naming convention, and it sees mayor, and it doesn't know what to do. So it's been bounced back, and there's nobody first or last name with mayor. So we're working those out a little bit. I apologize for the bumps. And we'll be switching to easthamptonma.gov as our URL in the very near future, once all the emails are switched over. It's the same, Counselor Wiss, you brought up when we changed the phone system. It's not that easthampton.org disappears and people can't find us, it redirects to, back and forth, so both URLs see each other. And ask some questions. That's what I have tonight.
Okay. I'd like to, yeah, no. Okay, we'll try to get one question, 'cause we're way behind in public meetings. So, Counselor Gomez, if you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mayor. I just have a concern.
Yes.
And a question. After the report from the AG from the high school.
Yes.
Would it have any consequences now with the Whitebrook? No consequences. And I just wanna know what happened with the fine for the water violation that we have not a long time ago, and if you know any information about that, and if finally the city's gonna have consequences to the persons that are doing something wrong in our city.
I have some knowledge of that event, and would also like to confer with the Department Director of Director Joe Pipchinsky, I'm working on that, and have a fuller report. And I, if I could, so get back to the either Subcommittee or Committee with something more full around that. But I understand, absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Okay, oh, Counselor.
Just really quickly, this is all really exciting, and thanks to the Planning Department for putting this all together. Valley Bike Share, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is, do you know approximately what the overall cost is for that program? Does that cover the full cost of the program?
That is very, it, it, this capital asset grant was not, it was not structured, the money wasn't structured the way we anticipated. We knew that it was coming out and thought it was really going to be targeted to a feasibility study or an update to Affordable Housing Production Plan, which we really are seeking money for. And it wasn't, it needed to be an asset, capital asset attached to one or more planning. And the money around that capital asset was pretty comprehensive. So you're talking about installation, you're talking about the charging pads, the bikes, the, the maintenance. Yeah, it was, at first I saw the number, I was like, really? That many for bikes? But, and it's four or five charging stations, and it goes along with a larger plan. So it's very comprehensive.
But that covers, so that's covering the cost?
It will. It, it is, with any grant we apply for, you know, what we ask isn't necessarily what, what we get. And, and both working with the other cities who have Valley Bike Share, we're ready to get something less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and know where we can leverage what they have and what we need, and, and maybe then go, you know, in sequential steps, and we had talked about sponsorship and whatnot, but this was, after talking to all involved, this was the best step forward, an unexpected opportunity.
And then, just quickly, assuming we were able to obtain grant funding, what's the typical timeline then for start to finish to be able to establish bike shares?
Once the bikes are produced, they're made, it's pretty quick. But right now with their production schedule, we would look for installation in the spring of 2019. There was a hope that we could get something late fall, but we were told not to hold our breath by the time the grant amount is announced and the planning and the whatnot. I think, I think spring 2019 is the soonest. I hope early spring.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I move that we open the public hearings.
Second.
Motion second to open public hearings, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes, Council Wrist.
We have before a sedentary departmental transfer, which transfers ninety thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars from the reserve fund to various accounts to cover the police labor unions increase in, and their contract negotiation, which was expected, and then the mayor put these funds in the reserve fund expecting this increase. We passed this three to zero, obviously. This was a very easygoing negotiation, as I understand it. There are two new things that were added to this contract. First of all, they get longevity pay now, and it's the only department, I was surprised to find out, that does not have longevity. That means that an officer has been on the job for ten years, they get an extra hundred dollars in pay. And every five years after that, unless I may correct, one of my finance member people will correct me, every five years after that, it's a hundred dollars additional, up to a cap of five hundred dollars additional pay for being on the job for a long time. We do, they mentioned this, and I think it's, it tells you about East Hampton, we do keep our officers a long time. They enjoy working for the city. And that institutional and community knowledge is so valuable. The other thing they got is a minor increase in hourly rate for shift differential. I believe, and I'm trying to remember, but that is if they have late night shifts, they get extra funding for that, and they never had that before. So those two items were added to the contract. The contract is one-point-five percent over three years, but they will be receiving three percent the first year, zero percent the second year, one-point-five percent the last year of the contract. And I believe, Mayor, you'll correct me, this is the last negotiation we have?
Yes, major contracts have been settled, and, and we have about a year.
Before we have new contracts.
Before we formally sit down, yes.
Okay. So the, as I said, the Finance Committee approved this three to zero.
Does anyone from the city would like to address this appropriation, or the publics? Would be your opportunity to come up and state your name? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, Council Wrist.
I'll move that the City Council approve the following appropriation. The amount requested is ninety thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars to be transferred from the reserve fund, ninety thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, to be transferred to police base pay, fifty-two thousand five-hundred-and-one dollars, police overtime account, six-thousand-six-hundred dollars, police longevity, six thousand dollars, incentive, twenty-two thousand five-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, holiday pay, two thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, police overtime court area, six hundred dollars, for a total of ninety thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund the police union contract raises and benefits that become effective July 1st, 2018. This request will cover the contractual increases in base pay, overtime, longevity, shift differential, education incentive, and holiday pay.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the departmental transfer of ninety thousand four-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. Additional questions or comments on this appropriation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Mr. President, I move the public hearings to close.
Second. Motion, a second to close public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes, public hearings are closed. We can move to standing committees. Finance, Council Wrist.
First, I'd like to report that the Finance Committee will meet August 29th at 5:00 PM. We have only one meeting scheduled this month in Room 1. I would also like to announce, as I'm also the chair of the Fin, of the CPA Committee, that that meeting has been moved to August 28th, which is a Tuesday before that, at 6:30 PM in Room 1. Both, both of these times required because of vacations. I would also like to announce a very, something just came up tonight from the CPA Coalition. We received notice that the state actually approved a ten-million-dollar increase in the CPA Trust Fund from the surplus, and they've done this in prior years, but there wasn't enough money, but they are very confident this year we're going to get the ten million. And that means our match will increase five percent, from eleven to sixteen percent, and that's real money. So I'm very pleased to announce that, especially since we're starting to spend it again. I would also like to move a couple of new items to Finance Committee. First, supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act, CPA, for the following appropriation. The amount requested is three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to be appropriated from CPA Reserve for Open Space, eighty thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars, that's a typo there, CPA Reserve, twenty-three thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars, CPA Undesignated, two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-fifty-six dollars, for a total of three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. To be appropriated to the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, for the following purpose, the acquisition of approximately twenty-three acres of land for open space and recreation. I would like to move that this be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, motion, a second to send the supplemental appropriation of three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to Finance for review. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
I'd also like to set a public hearing for the aforementioned appropriation for September 5th at 6:15 in East Chambers. That's a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second to set a public hearings for November, I mean, September 5th, that's three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars supplemental appropriation. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
We received this evening an amended agenda, and in that is an item that relates to this. I'd like to re, make a first reading, a bonding and borrowing request from the mayor to the City Council, President McCoury. Request is hereby made for the following amount requested, forty thousand dollars to be funded by borrowing. To be borrowed or bonded for the purpose of acquiring approximately twenty-three acres of land off East Street for open space and recreation, I move that this request be sent to public hearing, I'm sorry, to Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, I'll motion, a second to send the borrowing bonding request of four-hundred-thousand dollars to Planning as for review. More questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Since it's related to the CPA appropriation, I would also like to set a public hearing for that bonding request, also September 5th at 6:15 in East Chambers. That's a motion.
Okay, motion, a second to set a public hearing for September 5th on the four-hundred-thousand dollars. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Finally, I have a supplemental appropriation request. I'll make a first reading for the following appropriation. The amount requested is nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus any accrued interest to the date of the vote, to be appropriated from the OPEB Stabilization Fund 86, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two, sorry, two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus any accrued interest to the date of the vote, to be appropriated to the OPEB Trust Fund 86, nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus any accrued interest to the date of the vote. Requested for the following purpose, to establish the OPEB Trust Account. I move that this be sent to Finance Committee for review.
Second. Motion, a second for the supplemental appropriation of nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two seventy-eight to Finance for review. More questions?
I just have a question. OPEB, remind me?
Other, I, forget.
Post-employment benefits.
Yes. It has to do with retirement.
Thanks, John.
I had on the tip of my tongue, and I forgot.
Okay, fine, thanks.
We have a motion.
Yeah, so much, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Oh, I have one more item. The Finance Committee met recently to review salaries and stipends and to make a final determination. We voted three to zero not to include increases or changes in salaries and stipends for all elected officials, boards, and committee members for the, this two thousand eighteen, nineteen term. So I'll make a motion that charter, that this full council approve the recommendation from the Finance Committee not to increase salaries or stipends for this term.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to follow the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation to not change any salaries or stipends for boards and committees. Additional questions or comments? All those in, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
That concludes.
Okay.
What about the one from the Finance Director?
I was going to say, I'd asked, does that go to ordinance? Okay, so I guess in order to establish?
I, I apologize, I only read the, the amount, and I would like to move the, therefore, the request from the Finance Director, accept Mass General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, OPEB Trust, to the Finance Committee for review.
Second.
Okay, motion, a second to, also to Finance, the Finance Director's request to accept MGL Chapter 32B, which allows OPEB Trust Accounts performed. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you, that does conclude, I hope.
Public Safety, Counsel Carrie.
Thank you. We continue to review the South Street Main Street intersection, the state work, looks like it's done. There's some new curb cuts in the convenience store parking lot, so approach Main Street from Park on South Street, and then look to your left and see if that's making a difference. That's what we're going to continue to do until September 11th, which will be our next meeting at 6:00 PM. It's the second Tuesday of the month, we usually do the first, but the first Tuesday of September is Election Day, so we're going to bump it one bit.
You'll be busy, bro.
Hope everybody's out voting.
If I could just comment on that, Counsel Carrie, I think the, I use that intersection quite a bit, so I'm very familiar with it. I think that it's a great improvement in line of sight. So I, I hope that creates the additional safety that we're all looking for. I wondered if there were any plans for improving the aesthetics of that, like Kolkovia pavement curb, curbing, it's some circular, but it's actually pretty big. It's almost like half of the, of the, of the area here, of the semicircle. Maybe some plantings or something? Is that, was there any, ever, any discussions of small plants, maybe about a foot off the ground, something that could pretty it up? I presume it's within the public way, and that's why we were able to do some work there.
Right, the State Highway Department has done all that work.
They've, they've done the work.
We can double check in with them and with the property owner.
Something simple, attractive, that just makes it all look great.
Okay, that concludes?
It does.
Okay. Appointments, Counsel Coniff.
Tonight, we met to review four mayoral appointments and two city council appointments. The mayoral appointments were as follows. Christopher Korzak for the EDIC with the term expiration December 30th, 2020. That was approved three to zero. Christopher has, he runs his own business in town, and so he, he's very interested in attending and being a member of that board, so no reservations on that one. Jason Miranda for the Committee Telecommunications Advisory Committee. Again, he's, he's, his cover letter spoke of the fact that he, and both he and his wife are remote workers, so that they spend a lot of time on the internet and are very and keenly interested in a more universal and option for, for East Hampton. So he has been approved as well, three to zero by the Subcommittee. We also had a nomination of Martha Smith for the Board of Assessors. However, we don't have any documentation on Martha, so we're going to table that until our next meeting. So Martha, if you're out there, don't worry about it. We're, we've got your back. The mayoral appointment for Michael Whitmore for the Conservation Commission with an expiration of December 31st, 2020. Again, Michael has been in East Hampton, I believe, since 2011. His home that he purchased abuts and has wetlands aligned to it, so that has generated a lot of interest from him. He's done an enormous amount of research on wetlands and conservation, so he'll be a welcome addition to that committee as well. So in the form of a motion, I would like to have this committee approve Christopher Korzak to the EDIC with term expiration December 30, 2020, Jason Miranda, Telecommunications Advisory Committee, December 31st, 2019, and Michael Whitmore, the Conservation Commission with an expiration of December 31st, 2020.
Second. Okay, motion, a second to prove that the previously named mayoral appointments. Additional questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
We also had two city council appointments, one for our esteemed clerk, Barbara La Bombard, who is a clerk to the city council. Her term is expiring, and the request was to have it re-upped for August 31st, 2020. Again, that was approved three to zero.
That's good.
By the skin of your teeth, Barbara.
Is she qualified?
I'm not sure. But, you know, I, and I, one of the things that I think is really important and, and that I value a lot, and I find, you know, in meetings when you have people who are so knowledgeable, that you don't even know they're in the meeting, because they're just taking care of business, and, and I really appreciate that about you, Barbara. So, so we approved that one with no problem. Lori Stewart, Principal Assessor with a term expiration of July 20th, 2021. Again, this one was approved three to zero. Lori has been the Principal Assessor for three years, I think we thought, that that was the amount of time. And we all felt she was doing a really great job in, in explaining things really clearly when we had questions. So again, we approved that three to zero for Lori. So I would like, in the form of a motion, to have this body approve the two city council appointments, Barbara La Bombard to the Clerk of the City Council with a term expiration August 31st, 2020, Lori Stewart, Principal Assessor with a term expiration July 20, 2021.
That's your second?
Second.
Okay, motion, a second, Counsel Wrist.
I would just like to comment that Barbara is an asset to this city government and has been for many, many years, and we are extremely lucky to have that kind of institutional knowledge in this city, and I am very grateful that she continues to want to serve us, and she's, needs to know that we were probably going to vote that you're not allowed to retire. Secondly, I have been involved with the council for 21 years, as many people know, and we've had some lack of stability in the assessor's office, and I cannot tell you how wonderful it's been to work with Lori and to know that that office is running smoothly. I think the mayor will agree with me, and I know that Counselor McCoury's been involved with those kinds of issues in the past, and we are very happy to reappoint Lori, because that, to me, that office needed. that, to me, that office needed that kind of stability and professionalism that it certainly seems to be.
Counselor Przewinski.
Echoing councillor Wiss's comments on both the assessor's office and our own clerk, I was just wondering if it's possible to extend the term for our clerk or whether it's limited.
It's in the charter.
It's in the charter, son of a god.
But we are having a charter review committee.
So, where are we voting?
No, no, yeah, there's a motion, a second. So any more questions or comments already? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Also wanted to report, as the mayor mentioned earlier, she came to the appointments subcommittee and spoke of the community relation committee and to date, I believe, there have been five applications received for that committee. There will be 11 in total. The plan is, the mayor is going to interview all applicants regardless, so even if there's 20, she's gonna interview them all, she'll whittle that down to the 11 and bring those forth to the subcommittee. There will be opportunities for, I think you had mentioned, there's gonna be some outreach and some forums around municipal government, how municipal government operates, how committees operate, how we kind of do the business of municipal governments. So there's gonna be some forums on that. I think the example you gave is that someone asked, you know, how do you apply and the answer was, like you apply for any committee and that still didn't answer the question because nobody knows how to apply to any committee. So, so there's gonna be that, which I think is gonna be great. The other thing we talked about was kind of the targeting of the beginning of this committee. The committee, ideally what we want is for the committee to start its first meeting with a full slate of appointees, so we would like to not start until we have all 11 in place so that everybody's starting from the same day forward. And I asked, you know, are we looking at October, November? And I think the mayor's preference, based on how many applications she's anticipating getting, would be that we probably are looking at first of the year to get going with this committee, which is fine, and if we end up going sooner, fine. I think those were the main points that you had brought out. I don't know, I think that was kind of it in general and specifically, so that's just a little bit of the summary of the community relations committee. So, again, if people are out there, want to apply, apply like any other committee. And we'll be looking forward, the mayor will be looking forward to those applications and will be contacting you for interviews going forward. Any questions on that to the mayor?
No.
Okay. We do not have any new business for appointments. Mr. President, you had indicated you wanted a meeting set, is that for a different agenda topic?
Yeah, what we do is, why don't we have, we'll make, have councillor Wiss discuss about the charter review committee and then we'll make a appointments meeting.
Okay. Did, go ahead.
You do have a patent, that appointment that was tabled and she was a former member of the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, we just, we had, we had nothing. So we didn't even know she was a former member, so.
She's a current.
So we're not gonna bring her back here?
No, she resigned.
She resigned.
So we're not gonna bring it back here, it's already in subcommittee?
Okay.
So we'll just take it on the next meeting, so I guess we can make the next meeting on the 15th? Or do we have an August meeting?
No.
Okay, so September, September 5th.
Unfortunately, as I do know the charter, you have 45 days from the time that appointment was given to the clerk to approve it. So unfortunately, you're gonna have to meet earlier than that if you want.
When did we get it?
You did, well, it's July 11th, it's been 30 days already.
When did, you timestamp these, don't you, usually, Barb? Received June 7th. We were just talking about the 45 days.
An appointment has to be done in 45 days per charter. The committee, the council has to approve it within 45 days or it's an automatic appointment.
Okay, what date did that go to the? We don't have any paperwork on it.
Oh, so we sent it, we sent it to subcommittee September 11th, I mean...
July 5th.
July 5th.
Submitted to council clerk July 5th.
Okay.
So you have 45 days.
Forty-five days will run out unless the mayor withdraws.
Can I just, so, this, this came up at the subcommittee and my, I guess my question about the automatic 45-day rule, subcommittee found at that level that the application was indeed incomplete and did not conform to charter and rules around application, there wasn't a cover letter or the one-page application, which I believe was a clerical oversight from my office. And that's why we had, I'll bring forward, I don't know, I'll go downstairs and we'll search the office and find it because it was there. So I just wonder, if the application is incomplete, does the 45-day rule still apply?
And actually, it's somewhat of a technicality because she made a vermin appointment, so it's not like this is worrying about a quorum either.
And it's your appointment, so if you're okay with that, then I...
I'm fine and apologize, you know, to the chair, who I think the appointments subcommittee has suffered the most from my clerical service.
I think as a procedure, if any, any mayoral appointment, whether it's complete or incomplete, it's been submitted, it's our, I think the charter rules and it would take effect the 45-day period and that's it. It's the appointment goes through without, if, unless we vote no, or the mayor withdraws the appointment. If the mayor withdrew the appointment, I think we're on procedural grounds that make sense. Barb, do you have any thoughts about it?
I think the 45 days is from the date it's submitted.
Right, from the day submitted, right.
Is it technically submitted without a cover letter?
It doesn't matter, no, it's the sheet that's given to the council.
Oh, the fact that it was on that.
It was submitted on July 5th.
I mean, I guess councillor Connor, if it's, you know, I think this is somewhat of a technicality in that we're, we're probably going to accept her, so we could either let the clock run out and be accepted or we could have a meeting again.
Within the 45-day timeframe, which I'm not sure what that date would be.
I mean, I will say that during our meeting today, the mayor did speak about Martha and the situation of leaving the committee and then rejoining the committee and that she's been a longstanding member of the committee, so from that perspective, I feel like I do have some insight into her. And so we can either let it run out and it's an automatic appointment or do we, can we vote on it without?
Yeah, we could vote on it.
Then why don't, why don't we do that? I'll, I'll bring it forth right now. I mean, if you, if the rest of the, if councillor Gomez is, is okay with that.
We can vote, I'm gonna vote abstaining, I prefer to wait until I have a letter there you can read.
Okay.
Mr. Councillor.
I would just say that since this is the mayor's appointment, she knows this person. If she could speak to that person now to inform the committee, I don't know her and I don't know her history, so if you can give us that, if you have any information, if not, I am okay voting yes, but I would like to know a little more. I always trust the appointments committee reviews these and if they haven't been able to.
Well, I, um, not, not to go down or, well, one, I would just, the point of the 45-day appointment taking place, because something was submitted to the city clerk, my question would be to this body, is if I were to forget to do this again and 45 days were going to run, could I then appoint, say, 11 people to a community relations commission without application and still goes forward in 45 days, would be my question. It's not how I understood the rules and I'm not trying to be, you know, adversarial, I'm really looking for clarity. I do appreciate the chair, while we are very tongue-in-cheek and this appointment subcommittee has made very clear to me, has this body, is that appointments are important and there are two parts of those appointments that are needed and that's a completed application and at least a cover letter, if not a resume. And we have had applicants who are well-known to this committee as well as new to this committee who have submitted several pages in support of their application. And, and I take those as seriously as the one page, but indeed, information is given. So, well, it is a clerical oversight, I just really wonder.
Counselor Wiss?
You point out another issue in the charter, I'm reading it right now, which, the reason that was changed to 45 is it used to be 30 and that didn't give us enough time
Sure.
In the summer, when we don't have two meetings, to have appointments reviewed properly.
Yes.
So, this is something, what you bring up is if applications can be considered when they don't have full materials.
Yeah.
That's, that's an adversarial position between the mayor's office and the council. However, I think it points up that we need to maybe write language that says applications need to be complete. In this instance, there is no adversarial situation here.
No, I'm...
And she was a assessor before. I'm trusting your judgment on it, if you feel that it's okay, I'm willing to vote for it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we have no language that prevents the 45 days from running out unless the appointments committee wants to make a meeting prior to that timeline, which would be, you could use the council meeting that was normally scheduled two weeks from now, that would still be within the 45 days.
Again, it's at the pleasure of the council. I am, I am seriously asking, given my experience with making appointments and, and what had, since January on.
Good question.
What, right, what, what the rules are.
We don't, this is a whole that you have never had.
I mean, and I look at, I mean, I really do wanna know, if somebody, if I just put forward an application and I forgot the cover sheet or whatnot, does the 45 days tech? If it's an incomplete application, does the subcommittee say?
Subcommittee could reject it.
Yeah, I think we've done it.
Well, I guess, I would say that once a name is submitted by the mayor, that's a submission to the council, whether there's any additional information, doesn't really matter.
We've had cover letters that happen in one sentence and resumes that have been 30 pages.
And it's stamped and dated, delivered to the clerk.
Right, so I think I, I agree.
Time runs.
The problem with councillor Wiss though is that even if we have this, it has to be approved within 45 days by the council.
The option is for the full council by a two-thirds vote to reject the application and it could be reapplied. We could reject it without prejudice, allowing for our rule of six months, you could reapply it in, in September with the application. I don't know what, that limits the Board of Assessors. The problem is the summer, which is why this 45 days was added. It doesn't give us enough time, but that is, that's the reason.
Right.
That's the only technicality now that we can do, is reject the application.
Counselor Zaire?
Well, speaking of technicalities, my question is, is the initial application for review and thus referral to the subcommittee even valid if it wasn't accompanied by the appropriate materials?
We have nothing legally...
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you made it all the way to subcommittee, should it even have gone to subcommittee without the appropriate materials, I think it's for even any consideration.
Well, this is...
And thus, this 45 days even apply because there's not an actual application to even review?
I think it does, I think councillor Przewinski's point is well-taken. All that the charter requires is a name.
Okay.
Okay, and a name has been submitted. So I think...
So you're saying that the process of an application and a cover letter is kind of an internal process that's not part of, that's just a convenience thing that we do in the mayor's office?
It's a helpful policy, a helpful procedure, but it's not...
I'd love to see the layer run.
I know.
What was that?
That was spectacular.
A little finance, Bertie. It said that it's a subcommittee rule, it's not chart, the rule is not from charter, so...
So the, it's a council rule that we want and it's been followed.
It's new. That rule wasn't in place when I was on...
Yeah, I know, and it was during a normal time, it's, it gives you a period, but during the summer, when the spaces are different.
Right, here's...
The rules from the subcommittee are new.
Okay, I think I would like to ask the mayor to withdraw this name and then we'll re-up it in the September meeting. We'll, so we'll, if we can... Yes, please.
And I would certainly accept that suggestion and would like to do so, though, without prejudice at all, to be put on the applicant and that this is a clerical point of order to be clarified by my office and going forward.
And you still have the right, as you have done, to make an emergency appointment because we need a quorum on that.
Absolutely.
What, what, what?
Two.
Two. Two in a row.
Only two.
What do you mean?
What do you mean? What are 30?
Sixty days.
I can do a 30 and a 30, so I, I'll, I'll just do the second 30-day.
Oh, for emergency appointments, you're saying?
Yeah. It's not endless.
Right.
We're gonna run out of time.
By, by September 1st?
September 5th?
Sure.
Maybe, well, maybe just by September 5th, you're gonna have a new application and you're sent to subcommittee.
I'm not tracking.
There is, you know, emergency appointments do have some limitation, you can, you can do it twice for 30 days. And so, the mayor's appointment of the person to the Board of Assessors, we may run out of time and we do need someone in that position for a quorum, because this is only a three-person board. Counselor Wiss?
I, I have to say that I feel that this council should approve the appointment this evening based on two factors. One, this person was on the assessor's office. She's already doing the work in an emergency situation and for us to reject it or ask it to go back means that there will potentially be a hole or a lack of a quorum and the assessors won't be able to do their job. And I think that presents a government problem. I am willing to vote on it if, if the appointments committee wants to bring her name forward this evening without recommendation and I understand councillor Gomez doesn't want to abstain, but...
I haven't seen councillor, councillor Peake.
I, I think I agree with what councillor Wiss is saying, that the specific circumstances here, a lot of things have aligned to create a sort of unusual situation, but given that this is a person who's already served on this board, I'm assuming without incident and given that we need a quorum there, I, I would say that I, I would support going forward with this with the one thing that, I don't think this is lost on anyone, that if we end up going ahead with a charter review, this might be a thing that we would really like to, to look at to make sure that this, this unique situation is not something that we wind up in again.
Does anyone, does someone at this one have something to say? Counselor Przewinski?
I have no problems moving forward, seeing that person is served on the board. I do question the need to move forward, however, in terms of a quorum. Two members of the three-member board make a quorum. They meet every other week, I think.
I'm not sure how often.
I'm not quite, I don't think it's any more than that. I don't think it's gonna affect the business if it ran out on the first and we met, they met on the fifth and there's still two members that create a quorum. The third is nice to have.
One last question.
Counselor Spahn?
So, when we do business from this agenda and we have items on this agenda, we look at that last date, because that's the date that things expire and this date is 10/9. So why are we talking about 45, 30? This, this piece of paper says 10/9 and the business is, has to be concluded by 10/9.
Counselor, yeah.
Go for it.
We have a rule, a 90-day rule, that you have to re-up anything that's in committee.
Right.
Unfortunately, for appointments, that rule is wrong in the sense that the charter overrules our rules. The charter says you have 45 days, so that's just something that Barbara does for every item, every measure that's put before the council gets a 90-day limitation unless it's renewed. So that doesn't apply to appointments because the charter has specific deadlines, unfortunately.
All right. Okay.
Do we want to put that forward?
Well, I have another question. Council, the, the appointments subcommittee decided to continue and not vote on this individual, so you have no vote from the subcommittee.
You don't need a recommendation.
Is that a recommendation? I'm just asking about procedure, that's all.
We don't need a recommendation.
They actually talked about it, but they couldn't make a recommendation, so.
Okay, so...
But doesn't prevent us from voting on it tonight.
All right, so if that's the direction that this committee would like to move in, I guess I'm not gonna stop it, but I will say that it is really bad form to put somebody before the subcommittee with no information.
I agree.
And, you know, I, sure, I'll take your opinion that she's awesome and great and that's awesome, but I have no personal knowledge of that and I have, I haven't talked to her, I don't have any information. So it is my preference, as the chair of the committee, to get that information and to move her forward on our next meeting or to have the mayor take her off and remove it and then we'll re-up her. I get the whole quorum thing, but you can't use that as an excuse to not have process in place and in this case, we don't have any information about her and so...
Counselor Wiss?
I agree, I kind of agree.
I almost had you.
No, I do agree, but I just wanna make sure we're clear. If the mayor does not want to remove the person from your agenda, she has the right to leave her.
Yeah.
She's appointed in 45 days, there's nothing we can do about that.
Got it.
Unless we call a special meeting of the council, which I don't think anybody wants to do.
They could vote at that.
So, we could also reject that person without prejudice if the mayor decides not to remove it, but that becomes an adversi- it, but that becomes an adversarial situation, and I do hope we don't do that because I think we have a good rapport with the mayor. So, what do you think, Mayor?
That's right. That was good. Good pivot.
I'm just trying to point out the facts.
May I? I'm sorry, before you get me into it, Counsel Kozinski?
What may be helpful is if you, I'm not sure when the thirty days temporary appointment expires.
August fourteenth.
Your thirty-day appointment expires on August fourteenth.
And that's the second.
And then there's another chance to re-up.
But then you re-up, that takes you through past our meeting time, so we should be covered. Processually.
You have your next meeting, not your next three meetings.
Ms. President, is there any?
We meet on September fifth.
But we'll just be getting it, we will be voting on it on September fifth.
No, why wouldn't we? Because we would, as a subcommittee.
As a subcommittee.
Support information.
Technicality. It has to be removed from the agenda or its forty-five days. She has to withdraw it and be put in, or.
And it has to come back to the city council, be voted back in, and then go to subcommittee?
That's correct. I'm just going with the.
Is it possible that we could vote on it as a committee at that meeting without going to subcommittee?
If nobody objects.
If no one objects.
If nobody objects, that's.
And all the information is before us.
Yes. If nobody objects, the charter allows a measure to be approved at one meeting if no counselor objects.
Without going to subcommittee?
Right. But you'll have all the application.
And you have all the information. And we agree now that no one will object.
Well, I have to ask the Appointments Committee, Counsel Gomez, how do you feel about that? Because we could approve it on September fifth.
I mean, like I said before, without any information tangible, I wouldn't vote.
Yes. If you had the information.
If I have it, yes.
Okay.
So the procedure would be, the mayor must remove her name from the council now and resubmit it. When it's resubmitted for the September fifth agenda, it will have all the application materials. We will meet as a committee of the whole to, to approve her.
Or, to vote on.
Vote on. If we don't, well, here's the other thing, because you brought up a good point, if we don't approve her and the thirty days runs out, the second meeting in September, we could approve it. It may, if they don't have, it's hard for a three-member body to get a quorum if somebody's absent, so that's the issue. But that's also a possibility. I understand.
Okay. I mean, for, for an appointment, this is kind of crazy. But, so is that, about the consensus, if nod, if we would prefer, you would prefer the mayor to withdraw the application?
I would.
And we will.
And bring it back without going to subcommittee to the September.
On September meeting, we'll have a full packet, which will include the information, and when I go to subcommittee, we'll vote on it directly then with all the information you want. Okay?
Are you okay with that?
Barb, is that all it takes? Does the mayor say, would I draw that nomination?
She just said it.
I was.
I just wanted to make sure that's all she needs.
The mayor's.
Okay, so yes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's request to withdraw that application.
Second.
Without prejudice.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I apologize that the knowledge of the charter made this happen.
I would just, as far as adversarial or not, I certainly didn't view this at all as adversarial and actually found it quite educational, so.
Well, it certainly pointed out a hole in the charter.
And I've had a lot of conversations with members of the community who have lived here a long time, who I'm sure it was, and I do, I say it without any sarcasm, illuminating and helpful. It has been very interesting since the CRC that so many folks have come up with really basic questions and it, it just underscores what you assume is what you think you know and that might, probably is not true.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so we don't have another subcommittee meeting because we have no new appointments.
No, but we're talking about the Charter Review Commission.
Right, but as I conclude my business for subcommittee, there is no need, yeah.
Okay. I conclude.
I conclude. I am so done.
Counsel Dernier.
I think ordinance should be a little shorter. So, the ordinance subcommittee did meet on July eighteenth. We had a lively meeting. We discussed all of our issues. One of the things, I just want to, all of our issues, one of the things I want to give an update on is the enforcement of the plastic bag ordinance. We are still within the grace period since the ordinance has passed, and there is a bill H four-two-three-four, which is an act reducing plastic bag pollution that is now in the House Committee on Ways and Means. So, we're kind of holding off a little bit to see what happens with that before we do anything more with who's gonna enforce it, which is gonna be a little bit of a sticky, wicked. We did discuss bicycles, we thought we came to a conclusion, we were almost there, almost there, but I think we need, we need a little bit more time for this to align our city ordinance to the state ordinance. You know, I think the, the main issue here is, you know, do we, you know, go with the wording of the state ordinance, which allows bikes to take the lane whenever, or do we have a local twist on it, which we have now, which says that bikes should, you know, try to maintain the rightmost lane to allow cars to pass when safe? And, and so we're still kind of working that language out to make it fair and applicable, but not enable people to, you know, intentionally impede traffic. And then, we're still looking at cannabis topics. The planner did come to our meeting and we did talk about some things that might need to be updated as he kind of continues to deal with different businesses that are coming into town. And so, our tentative next meeting, since some of us are gonna be out of town, is gonna be August twenty-ninth, which is Wednesday.
That's not gonna work.
It's not gonna work. Yeah, we have two meetings scheduled on August twenty-ninth already, sorry, buddy.
Who does?
Finance.
Yeah, finance. Do we have overlapping?
And all rooms are gonna be used.
Every room is gonna be used? Well, then, we will have a meeting that is.
Sorry.
At the bar. Just kidding. So, we will announce our next meeting when there is a place to have it. So, and that concludes.
Barb, does that include up here?
I suppose it could be. I think here is open, but I'm not sure.
Are there any counselors that are on both, all those committees?
Rules.
It's, it's.
I would like to attend the meeting, if possible. If it's, if it's conflicting with finance.
Well, if you were, if you.
If you made the meeting later.
Well, in order to expedite this report, I'm going to say that we will announce our next meeting. As, as we find appropriate time. And I guess a bit of housekeeping here, I'm gonna move to ask for an extension of ninety days on all three of my topics, please.
Second. Okay, motion second for a ninety-day extension on the three topics under ordinance, agenda items, additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
Concludes.
Concludes. Property, Counsel Kozinski.
No report this evening?
Okay. Rules and government relations, Counsel Riss?
Oh, boy, do I have a report, I'm sorry. First, some business, we will meet on August twenty-ninth at six, I'm gonna make it six fifteen, so finance is enough time. Rules Committee will meet at Room One to discuss, continue discussion of MGL Chapter fifty-nine and the new business. I will make a motion now to, that Counsel McCloy's request to review and adopt city's social media policy be sent to the Rules Committee for review.
Second. Motion second to send a rules, Counsel, review to adopt city's social media policy. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, abstain? Motion passes.
We met recently and we discussed the items on our agenda. As for Counsel Zarrett's resolution, the proposed, he proposed using cannabis revenue to help residents, seniors, and fixed income through property tax credits or abatements. We discovered, the assessors were there and you received tonight what they presented to us, their objections to the use, I'm sorry, wrong, sorry, they, they said that they had some issues, but the primary issue was the DOR does not allow local property tax abatement or credit programs or exemption programs to be developed by the local government. It can only happen through the DOR, which is why we have Chapter forty-one C, et cetera. That kind of hurt it. Also, I want to remind everyone, as we have this new cannabis revenue coming in and we have ideas on how it can be used, the revenue from cannabis must go directly to the general fund. All revenue goes directly to the general fund and then is appropriated through the budget process or by supplemental appropriation by the mayor. So the mayor could finance this kind of a program if she, she so chose. We do not have the authority by state law to finance a program on our own. There's also the question of how much staff was needed. I want to compliment Counsel Zarrett, though, because he had a program and he thought it out very carefully, and although it would may, had some difficulties, he was trying to find a way to help seniors and fixed income, given the nature of the recent vote for the And we, we did have good conversations with the auditor and we may be looking at, for future discussion, which was Counsel Zarrett's main reason for bringing it forward, ways of trying to help that particular group further than the, than the current program allows. So, I have a motion and we move, the recommendation from the Rules Committee is three to zero to remove the Counsel Zarrett resolution from the Rules Committee's agenda, though without prejudice. So I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to remove without prejudice Counsel Zarrett's resolution on the Community Assistance Act. Counsel, break.
Yeah, I just want to say, since I was there, I'm comfortable with this, but really explicitly based on the without prejudice thing, if we can find some way to alter this, do anything that would, that would make this in compliance with what the state is required, I'd be very, very eager to look at it again. It's just that in the form that it stands right now, it's not something that we could implement, so I, I hope that we can, we can look into that and figure out if there's something we can do.
Yeah, I think a good, obviously, place to start is with Melissa. I mean, there's a lot of ground one, she can say, can't do it, or can do it, you know, so it'd be a good place to, to find out, if you have an idea.
So I, I'm really interested in continuing to have this conversation.
There's still questions, comments on this? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? Motion passes.
I presented to the council the possibility of adopting forty-one C and one-half, which was an attempt on my part to increase the income limitations the current exemption program allows. If you recall, that program, we reduced the age to sixty-five and increased the amount of exemptions to one thousand. Forty-one C and a half would increase, but that income limitation is twenty-five thousand for an individual and twenty-nine thousand per household, which is very low, in my opinion. So the idea that we could do fifty-seven thousand with forty-one C and one-half being approved was the reason I brought it forward, to see if there were a possibility. But there were many issues and the assessors provided, and you have a copy, some of their problems with it. We didn't make any motion to remove it from the agenda. I'll just update you. One of the things that's difficult is if we adopt forty-one C and one-half, the other programs are removed. They no longer are valid. We can only have one or the other. And what that meant was, as the assessors pointed out, that current advantage for our seniors, where they get a thousand dollars max, would be reduced because it spreads out over a lot more people, unfortunately. So the very people we want to help get less money. They also brought up a point that assets are not considered in forty-one C and one-half, which means someone may make the income threshold of fifty-seven thousand, but if they have other assets which help them, they could, that's a loophole that allows wealthier people to not pay taxes. There are other issues with it, too, but we are going to try and investigate further the asset reductions and look at it a little more at the next meeting, but it doesn't look like this, the assessors were pretty adamant that they were not in favor of doing this. It also would require, if we did it, increased staffing to deal with all the applications that might come in. So, you can look over what the Board of Assessors has brought forward, but we are going to continue discussing it at our next meeting and have a report. Finally, the charter review. As you recall, we want to do a charter review. It was requested to bring it to the Rules Committee to see what those recommendations might be, because if we are going to do it, we have a strict timeline of one year in the charter to have it done and time is running out. So the Charter Review Committee did make, the Rules Committee made some recommendations, and I'll go over them with you, that the council, that this be a council select committee as per the charter, which is formed to review the charter with recommendations to be presented to the full council by September. The charter says one year from the date of the first, one year, and from the date of the first meeting. And the recommended procedure is the Home Rule Special Act procedure, which is council and mayor approval, which is the procedure we used last time. That procedure may, means that once the council and the mayor approve of a charter change, or all of them, they are sent through our state representative and petition, first of all, they are approved by the Attorney General's Office. Once that approval is done, then they go to the state legislature through our state representative for final approval. There is no ballot for the voters. We can choose to have a ballot, but we don't have to. According to forty-three B, Massachusetts Law, Section ten, a charter commission is required to change elections or terms of offices of elected officials. There seems to be some confusion there because some cities and towns seem to have gotten around that, where the council and the mayor vote a charter change that might involve the terms of office of the city council, and then it goes to the ballot, once it's approved by the Attorney General. The city attorney doesn't feel that's appropriate or is right according to Mass. General Law. We're gonna discuss that further so that we can bring back a final review of whether or not we want to attempt the council-mayor approval of elections or terms of offices through the Home Rule Petition Method. But the city attorney says that that may not be, is not legal according to forty-three B, Section ten. The committee is a special committee of the council and appointed by the president of the council. We decided to have four members of the council on this committee and four citizens of East Hampton. The citizen number is limited by the charter, we can't increase that, I had hoped to do that. All members must commit to meeting twice a month, and the reason we brought that up is because there's a lot of work to do and we don't have much time to do it. The committee must approve all recommendations by a two-thirds vote. That's our recommendation, and it's based on the fact that forty-three B, Section ten, says that the council, the full council must approve any charter change by a two-thirds vote. So, the fact that we have eight members doesn't really matter because you need six votes to approve any charter change, if the full council approves these rules, these advisory recommendations. The president will recommend citizens to the Appointments Committee for review by the end of August, with hopes that the full committee can be formed by the September fifth meeting. Although the Appointments Committee review is unnecessary, as the president can make the appointments on his own, the Rules Committee recommends this review by the Appointments Committee to safeguard the president from recrimination by those not chosen and to give the president such advice as necessary to form the best diverse committee. We felt that the Appointments Committee could help, and I want to thank Counsel Coniff and Counsel Derby for being at the meeting. This is a good idea in that the president might get ten or twelve people that want to be on the committee, and this way there'll be a city council helping with that. But I just want to reiterate, the president is the one who makes, just like the president makes the finance committee and the members at the beginning of the term, et cetera, the president makes this, and that's in the charter, that's not just our decision. So, we recommend, therefore, if you vote these recommendations in this evening, then the Appointments Committee, I'll turn it over to Counsel Coniff, will make a meeting to hopefully review those applications.[1781.12] hopefully review those applications. I'll entertain any questions.
I have a question. So, in point number five, it says the President will recommend citizens to the Appointments Committee for Review by the end of August 2018. So, that's four weeks from now. Is that with no applications, you're just gonna pick people out of the ether?
No, we're hoping to get a president.
Okay, so, so this starts the formal process of announcing to the world that we want application? And will that also be posted on the, the city website?
Yeah, and I'd like to, if I report in the audience, to make note that any, anyone who is interested, citizens of serving on the Charter Review Committee, please send a, a letter of intent, you know, to the present city council, you know, through my email from the website, or even be sent to the city clerk, or drop off even a handwritten, whatever kind of request you feel comfortable with, so I can, we can accumulate all those and those, and then we'll, again, as Counsel Rist alluded to it, doesn't need to be a sit-down with everybody, but I think it's best to have, you know, the point in the subcommittee to, you know, go over some of the applications.
Okay.
And I also want to point out, counselors, I know a lot of people might want to be on this committee. We increased it to four rather than three to allow for that, but any counselor in any committee can sit in with that committee, and the committee chair is required to, to allow that person. They don't get the vote at the committee level, but of course, a counselor should be able to make their own opinion known. So, the fact that you may not be on the Charter Committee, per se, doesn't mean you're not allowed to bring your opinion at the committee level, and I think that's very important in this case, because the Charter is our Constitution. It is what rules this city, and it should be hard to change it, and it is. That's why the election situation is hard to do, because it is such an important document. So, I do recommend that any counselor that may not, the President, you're all gonna ask the President if you'd like to be on the committee, but if he chooses to appoint people to the committee, those of you that aren't on it, doesn't mean you're not certainly welcome to come to a meeting and discuss anything. I just want to point that out, because I think that's, that's the case for all our committees.
So, Counsel Coniff, if it would...
Wait, let's vote to Sid first, because if, if the Council doesn't approve it, then we can't have an appointment. We don't need appointments. I, I have to make a motion that the full Council approve our recommendations first, which include the appointments.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counsel.
I just would like to ask Counsel Rist, is there an urgency to do it at this meeting? We just received the full report on the desk here today.
The urgency is...
It seems like there's a lot, this is a very important decision, the public should really have a chance, I think, to read this. We should have a chance to digest it some more.
All we're doing is approving whether we should have a committee.
And we're approving how many members, how it's, how it's formed.
That's all by the Charter, isn't it?
But how many members? But I heard you say, three members or four members?
The four citizens is part of the Charter. You have to have four citizens. You can't have more, you can't have less. That's the Charter.
And you, you can have any number of counselors?
Yes.
As long as it's less than five?
We decided it had to be less than five, because that means you have a quorum of the full Council meeting as a whole, and that doesn't make sense, so.
We have no...
There is nothing in the Charter that limits the amount of counselors. That was a Rules Committee report.
Appreciate, I appreciate the rationale that every time five counselors get together to discuss a matter, that, that would create a quorum of the city council.
Those counselors are approving, yeah, and that disenfranchises the other four members of the Council, who might not be there, because if five members were there approving a Charter Change, they have already approved it. Kind of, you know, I didn't want to set that up. Now, as for the timing, we don't have a lot of time. We have a year. There's a lot out there that people want to change. If we decide to go after elections through the Home Rule Charter Petition, which we're gonna meet and debate further, that makes the deadline July 12th, not September, because we have to, according to the law, we have to get it to the Attorney General, that has to be approved.
It doesn't go to the Attorney General.
According to...
Yes, it does.
It doesn't.
I read it. Wow, okay. We'll debate that separately.
Towns are, need approval, but not cities. Any bylaw, any ordinance.
All right, well, then we'll see. I was told the Attorney General has to approve any language in the Charter.
No, they never have done it before. Not for cities.
All right, I will go with, Barbara has a lot more history than I do, so I'm gonna, in any case, we're worried about how much time we have, which is why we wanted to get the committee formed by September 5th. Counsel Kozinski, I just wanted you to know that.
With the hope that this would change the structure of the municipal election?
No.
If we do that, I don't think we can. We can only do that through a Charter Commission, which means a whole new process. I'll go over that. There has to be fifteen percent of the registered voters, who are, some group of people would have to go out and get signatures, fifteen percent of registered voters, to put a Charter Review Committee on the ballot. And at the same time, so many members, I forget, I think it's eleven, Barbara, have to be nominated to be on that committee. That Charter Commission can change anything in the Charter, as well as elections, but that's a commission of citizens. We don't have anything to do with that, which is the intent of that rule, so that elected officials can't change their own terms of office.
Right.
Which is what they can do. But apparently some towns have been able to do that, and I'm not in favor of that myself, but we want to keep talking about it and find out more about it. So, the Charter Commission, if that's the way people want to go, then that is a separate process. So, we'll only be talking about language.
Counsel.
So, I, I would just say, from the research that I've done on this, I do actually believe that a city council, I, I take no pleasure in disagreeing with any of you guys on this, but North Hampton, for instance, had an appointed board which sent their recommendations to the Council. The Council sent their recommendations, or sent a petition to the legislature. The legislature then said, okay, we're okay with this provided it's ratified by the voters, and put it on the ballot. That's the, also the model that was adopted in Pittsfield. That was also the adopt, the model that was adopted in Braintree. That's also the model that's currently being adopted in Peabody. So, I do believe that that is something that is a, I, I think that there is some confusion about this language, and I think it comes from the fact that there's two different processes for, for amending the Charter, and we'll get to the bottom of this, hopefully at the next Rules Meeting, but I do think that if, if we were to decide to put anything before the voters regarding Charter, a Charter Change of any sort, in order for us to hold the public hearings and get it to them, we would probably need to get everything done by the end of May.
No, July is what I...
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to get it to the legislature in July, which would mean, holding public hearings.
Because you have to get it on the ballot by September 12th, I think, right Barbara? Two months.
It takes thirty-five days before. Well, we're talking local election.
But, if I might, I appreciate Counsel Peak's research, and I, I know that's the confusion. I asked the city solicitor to look into this. He could not find any language in any law that says we can do this. So, we have to research, and, and those names, I appreciate if you give me those, I'll have to ask him to ask those city attorneys how they did that. But I also want to tell the Rules Committee that I've invited from the Collins Center, I'm gonna butcher his name, Stephen Mc...
Goldrick.
Goldrick, the Goldrick, to come. He is a very important member of the Collins Group, who helped North Hampton with their Charter. He knows Charter processes and he can maybe enlighten us as to how he's doing this for free, so everybody knows. So, we can find out if we want to do that. So, the Rules Committee will come back to the full Council with that report at the September 5th meeting. We need to have a committee. Whether we choose to do elections is a second discussion of this Council. We would decide whether we want to use this process or the commission process, and I think we would discuss that at the September 5th meeting in order to make sure that we give the new Charter Review Committee its marching orders. You're gonna do elections or you're not gonna do elections, okay? But now, we're just making sure we still want to have a Charter Review Committee, and I think we do. I think a lot of people in town want to see us look at the ambiguity in our Charter. That's the regular, the other language besides elections. So, I would like to make a motion that we do accept these recommendations.
Second.
Well, wait, I'm gonna read it first. That the Council approved the recommendations of the Rules and Government Relations Committee on the formation of a Charter Review Special Committee of the Council, and that the committee shall recommend to the Council any changes to the Charter that it feels would be beneficial to be presented to the legislature as a Home Rule Petition, or if necessary by law, subject to the ratification of the voters of East Hampton.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to create the Charter Review Committee, as just outlined by Counsel Rist. Any more discussion on this committee? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion passes.
Now, I'd like Counsel Coniff to discuss the timing of when these applications will be reviewed by the Appointments Committee.
Do we, is September 5th due late?
Well, it has to be done by...
Yeah, we have to.
He's gonna name the committee on that date.
Okay. It has to be posted for at least ten days.
Yeah, I would, I mean, if we, so Mondays, the 27th of August, Monday or Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday, 27th to 28th of August.
Sure. Yeah.
One better than the other?
Why do we keep looking that way?
When?
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh to 28th of August, will you be home, will you be back there?
I'll be back the 27th.
Can we do the 27th? I'm sorry, Mr. President.
He's not, I'll pick on the 27th.
You're not back?
You'll be back the 27th.
He said he is back on the 27th.
Oh, he'll be back by, okay.
There's a CPA meeting on the 28th, and I'd like to attend your appointments meeting, so that's...
I'll be here the 27th.
All right, so, let's do the 27th. Six o'clock, five o'clock, whatever you guys want, five, five.
Five o'clock?
Five.
Monday, the 27th, okay, so again, what will happen at that meeting, we are going to make a public announcement that any citizens who are interested in being on the Charter Review Committee, please send their letter of intent or request to be on the committee to myself, either through my email, you can drop it off or mail to the city clerk. We will accumulate all those citizens who are interested, and on the 27th, we will, as a group, get together and counsel make some recommendations. Ultimately, it becomes a city council president appointment. We'll pick four citizens to be on that committee. At the same time, any counselors who would like to be on that committee, as outlined by Counsel Rist, we're gonna give it to four, just so we don't run to quorums, and again, same process, please either send me an email to let me know you would like to be on the Charter Review Committee. The decision, so we'll, so, and the announcement of that committee will be made at the September 5th City Council Meeting.
And just to point, two meetings a month, and it's imperative that we have everybody at these meetings, because we're talking about language for the Charter. So, if you want to be on the committee, that's a commitment. Lot of time.
Okay. So, did, do we make a motion for that, do I need to make a motion to make, create that? No, we don't have to make a motion.
We did the appointments, we did the appointments. That concludes the Rules Report.
Okay. So, we do have one a little bit, we do have to make, to accept the warrant for the primary on Tuesday, the 4th day of September 2018. Polling opened from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The offices for the primary will be Senator in Congress, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Receiver General, Auditor, Representative of Congress, Counsel, Representative Counselor, Counselor of a District, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, District Attorney, Clerk of Courts, or Registered Probate. So, again, this is in a form of a motion to accept the warrant for the primary on Tuesday, 4th day of September 2018. Is there a second one?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion passes. I believe that concludes a much...
Will we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion passes. To you, September 5th.
We have to sign the ninety thousand dollar one. Tom, send me the names of all those cities. This is enlightening to me, although it disturbs me that they...